Remember the days, ginormous video cameras. I had one. Battery pack.
Hi, just started and I'll just put you under the microphone and we'll start this event in three. All right? Okay, thanks.
Good evening. The time is seven o'clock. We call the meeting to order. Begin by saying "plead".
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Misty, could you call the roll, please?
Georgia Holmes.
Present.
Bob Nelson.
Here.
Martin Meyer.
Here.
Harleen Kane.
Here.
Sam Powers.
Here.
Ron Richards.
Here.
Carol Anne Swartzamoff.
Here.
Skylar Wetzel.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we ask everyone present, next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. And we do have a couple of things that we'd like to consider, a motion to amend the agenda. First of all, we're going to add personnel action in executive session. So I would like to delay personnel, approval of the personnel actions until after the executive session. We also would like to suggest that we move Item A in Old Business prior to Item A in ordinances because one of the considerations for that possible discussion for the irrigation main installation does involve the 2018 appropriation. So with that being said, I would ask for a motion to amend the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Move the personnel to after executive session and move Old Business Item A. Add many ordinances.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we have that amended agenda. Is there any comments or discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I would remind everybody, if you do have a conflict of interest on any item on the agenda, please make that known prior to voting. You do have the minutes before you from the previous August 21st council meeting. I would accept a motion to approve those minutes.
Make a motion to approve the council minutes for the August 21st meeting. Second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We approve those minutes. Are there any comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you have Item A bills in between? Those should be in your package. We expect to accept the motion to approve the bills in between.
I'll make a motion to accept the roll. I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the bills in between. Any questions, comments, or discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also in your package, you have current claims. Would you accept a motion to accept current claims as listed?
I'll make a motion to approve the current claims.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the current claims. Are there any discussion, questions, or comments?
I just wanted to comment that we have to clean and lean on your $4,060 and another one that was for $4,300. We have been doing some cleanup and it is not cheap, but it does go on to be recollected. So I need to make sure we understand that.
Okay, thank you, Georgia. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the current claims signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also in your package, you have Item C, the Wells Fargo credit card expenditures. Accept a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Wells Fargo credit card charges. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is communication from the public. Are there any communications from the public? Misty? We have a...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Jeff, if you could give us your name and address and so forth, please, for the public record.
Okay. Hello, Jeff Shannon, 13-18 Schofield Street, 11-year resident Hot Springs. Mayor Cotty, county commissioner, wrong, sorry, city administrators, city council people. Those of you who know me know that I have a pretty extensive law enforcement background. And my little thing that I'm going to read you is not personal, it's business, and please know that, okay? Well, here we go again. August 26, 27, Saturday night to Sunday, 24 vehicles were burglarized, with two of them being stolen. This makes over 40-plus burglaries in our community in the past three months. What are the Hot Springs police doing about it? After the first string of burglaries, they paid some overtime to have two officers on midnights and made one arrest that actually had nothing to do with the burglaries. But now we're back to one lonely officer on midnights. Where were the police the evening while 24 vehicles were burglarized? Where were they? I've heard from three separate people, and God, I really hope that this is just a rumor, that they like to sit in the back of the PD because there is a big screen TV and watch Netflix at night. I hope that's a rumor. I really do. Why did criminals choose Hot Springs? Simply, we are an easy target. We really are. I'm a citizen of this community and I pay taxes along with all of you and we're simply not being protected. A basic concept, take it for granted, is that when we go to sleep at night, we are safe in this community. Are we? Evidently not. Do the officers have a mandatory mileage log where and when they were patrolling so that we can keep track of what they're doing during their eight-hour shift? Having been a law enforcement officer for many, many years myself, I understand they cannot be everywhere at one time. However, we have a severe problem that will only worsen if suspects are not apprehended soon. Who is to blame for this all occurring here? Sorry, folks, simply it's you guys and the Hot Springs police. You've not taken an aggressive enough proactive approach to keep our citizens safe from these criminals. This being said, my mom always taught me that you never bring a problem without possible solutions. So here are my possible solutions. The single biggest deterrent of crime is police presence. I understand we have a small police force, I get that, okay? It seems to me that we're having issues on midnights and the concentration then should be on midnights. Why don't we have one guy on midnights, two on afternoons, and sometimes three on days? We should grab one of those guys, I would prefer a supervisor, and put him on midnights. At least we'll have two officers patrolling midnights until this is all over. Another question, are you guys utilizing your reserves? You have two reserves. They volunteer their time out of the goodness of their hearts to patrol. Are we using them? Have they been asked, hey, can you fill in for us? Can you be a second officer for us at night? Why don't we start a neighborhood watch program? Neighbors watching neighbors. You know, the more eyes that we have on the streets, the better it will be. A citizens patrol program, something along that effect. Folks, this is not going to get better, it's going to get worse. These burglaries were organized. They obviously cased these neighborhoods. They knew where the vehicles were. They knew, back when, a few months ago when they were burglarizing buildings, they knew where there were sheds that were unlocked. They knew where there were houses that were no dogs that were going to bark, okay? We have to do some real police work. We've got to pound on doors, hey, did you see anything that night? We've got to start asking citizens, hey, if you see something strange, please call, okay? I urge you and the Hot Springs police to take a step back from your business-as-usual approach and formulate and execute an aggressive plan to rid us of those people who wish to commit criminal acts in our community. I'm not trying to be a jerk, it's just that it seems to me that I moved here 11 years ago and one of the great things was, I never had a lock in my garage. I mean, I'm sure a lot of you too never had a locked your car, and now we do. We're not the only ones that got hit. Shadrin's getting hit, a lot of communities around us are getting hit. It seems to be a rate. But if the word gets out that the city of Hot Springs is not going to put up with this and we have very proactive police that are going to do something about it, maybe they'll skip our town. I'm going to come back on the next meeting and I would appreciate if you have just some input for me as to what you guys, at least what your plan is or what you're...
I have some input for you now, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, out of those cars, 22 of them were unlocked. You as a citizen and the citizens of Hot Springs do have a responsibility to lock our cars. Crime is something that is everywhere, unfortunately, in this nation. And just because we live in Hot Springs, we're not immune from it. As you mentioned, it is an organized ring from Rapid City down to communities in Nebraska that are getting hit. We have a small police force, they're doing the best that they can, and we are continuing to attempt to investigate and find suspects. One of them has been arrested. We also are aware that all of the stolen vehicles have been falling down the reservation. It's very difficult because of the coordination problem to get access to those and to those individuals that are suspect on the reservation. I would encourage you to, if you do have any concrete ideas with your experience, to get with Chief Close and bring some of those ideas to him. If there is a opportunity for neighbors to establish neighborhood watch, I think we would be open to it under certain circumstances, obviously. One of the things that we're concerned about, the citizens, is being armed and accidents happening. But we are concerned, I appreciate your concern, I appreciate the passion in which you brought those before this body and the council. But I wish I had an answer that we could put a sign up to say we're, this is stopped, that Hot Springs is a completely safe community. But we can't do that as yet. We're also trying some other covert measures that we're looking at, maybe see if we can document some of this activity and get it stopped.
George, can I?
May I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
I'm bringing this to you, Mayor Cotty, okay? Which in turn should bring this to the police chief, okay? I shouldn't have to go to the police chief, I'm coming to the city council and airing my problem. And I would really like to know next meeting if we are in fact going to start saturating midnights with another officer. Because one guy, poor guy, can't cut it, he can't be everywhere, you know? So I would just like to know if you guys, in the next meeting I'll give you, if you guys are going to formulate a plan to take care of us. I know you have things in the works and I know that the police chief posted a person of interest. That was Shadrin's person of interest and I'm glad he posted that, that was great, okay? But we need to act aggressively here. I agree, people should lock their cars, okay? That doesn't change the fact that we were hit 24 times, okay? Yes, lock your cars, lock your houses, be diligent, pay attention to strange vehicles, look at who's at your neighbor's house, you know? Neighbors need to start helping neighbors, I get that. But in the root of it, we have to be, we have to know that our police force is there to enforce these, excuse me, to enforce these things, to be there when we need them, to be looking, our eyes and ears when we're asleep at night. And I'm sorry, I just don't think that's happened, so... Georgia, I'm sorry, yes, on the side.
Yeah, I was going to comment, like, five years ago, I know we had a 3% crime rate. And right now, I know it's a big issue with the cartels down in the Bay Ridge reservation, drug activity. We tried to do something about that with our police force, maybe getting a drug dog. Some of this has to go also to our state's attorney. And what I would recommend to you is to come to the safety meeting and participate a little bit there. And I don't know if he does or not, Bob, you're the one that's on that committee. But I would suggest that you come and still voice your opinions about the use of reserves. There are a lot of options we have right now. We have what might be considered a crisis for us in this community, it is a crisis.
Can I ask you all a question as a city council? Don't you guys, aren't you in charge of the city of Hot Springs Police Department?
Of course we are.
Okay.
We are not going to micromanage the police department either. And we are, there are certain things that are going on that we don't talk about, but they are...
That's fine.
But they are, with the limited resources that we have, we're doing the best that we can.
Okay.
And we continue to try to make adjustments and, as Georgia suggested, you're that passionate about it, we encourage you to come to a safety, public safety meeting and voice your concerns there also.
I'll be happy to come.
We have taken, and we've taken, knowing what you said, and appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks a lot.
Jeff? Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, Bob.
I want to live in Mayberry too. This day and age, I don't think anybody's going to live in Mayberry anymore, but I think it's a responsibility of the council to get as close to Mayberry as we can.
Agreed.
So I appreciate everything you said. One thing I'd like to speak to directly, and I'm going to take a hit on this, is it's very easy for someone to say, someone said, somebody was doing something, hide behind and someone said. I don't deal with hearsay.
Okay, well, I prefaced it by saying I pray it's not true, but I hope it's not true. I'm just making the point.
My problem with saying that and hoping it's not true, I would encourage you to go back to the people who have said that and have somebody stand up and say, I'm not just saying it, I've witnessed it and I want to talk to you about it.
In a public hearing?
Not in a public hearing. I don't deal with those kinds of things in public hearing. It serves no purpose to try to shame somebody in a public hearing when they haven't been given the opportunity to correct the behavior prior to that, so I won't deal in that. But what I am asking you and what I've asked everybody who has come to me and said, I heard this happen, I may believe you, but I'm not going to deal in hearsay. Tell the person that you got the message from to come talk with us directly and do what we can to take care of it. I'm not going to deal in hearsay.
That's fine, Bob.
And along with public safety, they're the third Wednesday of every month, 2:00 at City Hall, and we encourage everybody to help. I've written down what you were suggesting as far as midnight shift, that, the days reserved, I think it's fair of Bob, thanks to you looking at it, and I want to, as I say, I want to get as close to Mayberry as we can.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you. Scott Meads in Brenham, lifelong citizen of Hot Springs. To Georgia's point, I think a drug dog would have been tremendously helpful, but the city council, that would be more fruitful to pay the drop a million dollars on somebody's streets instead. We couldn't afford a drop dog. And then as far as the point of not in a public hearing, I think that's inaccurate for accountability. I think something like that should be brought up in the public. It's our taxpayer dollars that pay their wages. So if they're playing Netflix or something in a back room, I think the city should know and the citizens should know as part of the accountability. The back room shady deals, dark body, behind closed doors is not a place for city government. Thank you.
Scott?
Let me respond to the drug dog because it's come out a number of times in that the council never disapproved the drug dog.
No, they disapproved the funds for the drug dog and said it wasn't, they couldn't afford it. They had it, it was here.
Well, you didn't hear it because it never came up for a vote. There was a discussion about not only the funds for it, but a whole list of things related to the drug dog.
Right, and the biggest issue is not be able to afford the...
And the police department withdrew their request. Council was never given the opportunity to vote on whether they wanted a drug dog or not. Go back and look at the papers.
And...
I'm the one that's been taking a hit for the drug dog, so I just want to help Derek complain that this council was never given an opportunity to vote on drug dog.
Other communications from the public?
I'm going to lighten it up a little bit. My name is Ray Palmer. I live outside the city, in north of town. My wife and I are very involved in city activities, volunteering.
Could you speak into the mic so the recorder can pick it up? Thanks, Ray.
We have something coming up and I belong to Rotary International and also the Legion Riders who participate in the parades and making sure everything, we help the police in traffic control and things like that. The reason I'm here, on the 23rd of September, Rotary's having a stair climb and run. And I, when I was looking into it, I didn't think we would need to get a permit from the Department of Transportation because all we're talking about is people crossing crosswalks. But when I talked to them today, they said that we would need a permit. So I know that can't be done until your next meeting on the 18th. And so the reason I'm here is just to give you a heads up about it. As far as the county highway or the federal highway, there's only two places that are going to be impacted, the crosswalk at the Evans Hotel and the crosswalk at the police Outside of that, we'll also have to have somebody at the dip bridge to help at that crosswalk. We intend to put a couple of people up by the state home because the runners will be going up to the state home and back down and caught. And I just wanted to make you aware of it and I'll be putting in for the permit and it'll be coming up at your next meeting for approval. And I know it's going to be just a few days after your, that it's at your meeting that we will have this event, so I'm hoping everything will go smoothly.
Okay, appreciate it, appreciate the heads up and certainly support the activity. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
Craig Romi, 342 North Fourth Street. I talked to George Cotty personally. First time our captain of the police force went on a high-speed pursuit by itself. This last time, he followed a deputy sheriff downtown, put the sheriff behind him, they mounted highway patrolmen out in the air, out on the 79 going north, and our captain knew they come there. Why are we allowing our citizens...
Hold it just a second. No, just a second because I'm going to stop you because what you're saying is incorrect. Yes, that captain was involved in a high-speed chase, I was listening to it on the radio. And the reason that there were several patrol calls that were called on that chase was because there were several suspects in the vehicle that was fleeing. And once the highway patrol and the sheriff were in close enough contact, our captain came back and he was called to go out to the scene of the crime and he went there to investigate and try to find witnesses to interview.
He went all the way out. There was a guy that almost ran off the road out there and grabbed a road. Police department was still in pursuit and grabbed the road.
Mr. Romi, I listened to, you did not listen to the calls? I did. I know what's happened.
Why are we letting our captain do this? Why are we letting the taxpayers that paid for this cop car leave City Hot Springs when it don't need to?
If they're involved in pursuit, there is nothing in the law...
Especially not when there's two deputies, a deputy...
There is nothing in the...
You're not going to do anything anyway because I just don't realize why you guys allow it to happen in City Hot Springs.
And again, I'm telling you, in accordance with South Dakota law...
You guys are going to let the cops do what they want from this town.
We have the opportunity for the police to...
No, George, never mind.
...the car out of the city limits if...
They should not be out of the city limits, George, I don't care what you say.
And that's part of South Dakota law. And I would ask you to look at that and if you find something different, let me know because you will not.
And it's a crime, why are they doing it?
Are there any other communications from the public?
Yeah, why don't anybody talk about it? You guys don't do it anyway.
Order, please. Okay, moving on, any other communications from the public? Move on to committee reports. Administrative and finance, Carol Anne, can you give us a report?
I can, and if anyone can't hear me, would you please let me know? Old Business, we discuss city surplus properties, review of proposals for auctioneer services. Raiding representative explained in detail the way an auction can be held. With the mayor's recommendation, the committee recommends that the council consider for approval an online auction using Raiding Auctioneer Services for the sale of surplus city property under New Business Item A on tonight's agenda. We also, under Old Business, there was a request, is a request to change airport manager's position to full-time, that will be on our next agenda in October. New Business, Mayor Cotty gave a summary of the request to reconsider the golf course irrigation bid. It is this committee's recommendation that the council reconsider and approve this request. Finance Office... Finance officer gave her monthly report. She also explained the Boulder Falls debt service reserve fund requirements and reviewed audit changes. Dakota propane has a low bid for pre-buy at a dollar or two. Animal control officer is going to be looking for another vehicle, his is not working, it's on its last leg. Award change, and our personnel manual was requested, the finance officer will review this request. Barb Walters spoke about disc golf. Barb Nelson informed us of a request for the city attorney to review part of the animal control ordinance and also part of, a part of the super ordinance, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Carol Anne. Airport Advisory Committee, Jordan?
I met with the group on 9/1 because there was a meeting this, that I was at, and we, or to the floor. Anyway, just to sum up some of the things that were discussed by the DOT and FAA and the SEH for things that needed to be completed before the funding and final payment of airport remodeling. The electrician has issues that he needs to take care of, and reflectors need to be moved, fencing on the gate needs to be taken care of. And then they discussed a little bit on the airport manager position. Brookings has an airport manager that is ranging from 53,000 to 71,000. Also, we had our balloon festival, which was very successful this last weekend. We had from 1,200 to 1,500 people that participated with three concession stands, and it was very successful. There were 10 balloons and gliders, both of them gave rides, and it was something that I think everyone enjoyed. I hope everyone comes on next year and platoes at least 20 balloons. We had Eric Higgy doing the gyroplane with pictures, and I think everybody saw a lot of those on the Facebook. And let's see. I wanted to thank Petra and all the volunteers, Lydia and the Chamber Commerce, Scott Aby, and all the donators, and I feel like we should probably put this in our minutes, Misty if we could, please, to thank our sponsors, Ace Hardware, Sennys, Chamber Commerce, Fall River Hospital, Black Hills Federal Credit Union, Dynamite Site, and the Hossins.
Please provide me that list.
Right, but I think we need to put it in our minutes.
I'd be happy to.
I appreciate it. And, um, let's see. Then they had the golf course exhibit with the flash of lights, which was very impressive. And we had people attend that that don't normally go to the golf course, and I really feel that it was a good demonstration and opening for people to start to see where our golf course is. I talked to quite a few people that have never been to our golf course and came up to see that, and they were impressed, and they felt like, um, the fact that they've never been there, they didn't feel it was theirs. So it needs to be expressed. Golf course belongs to the City of Hot Springs, and everyone is welcome up there. And the pro shop is something that can be used for any of the benefits that we use for other things like parties and whatever. And just the fact that we have the balloons up there brought more people in, I think was a really a positive thing for us, and that was all I have.
Okay, thank you, Jordan. I agree that the festival was an excellent event for Hot Springs. Custer Falls River Waste Management District, Ron?
Our next meeting will be the 14th of September, 7:00 PM here in the middle of the time.
Okay. And Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Carol Anne, do you have anything to report there?
We approved a sign application by email at 505-Falls-River. We will not meet this Wednesday. Our next meeting will be October the 4th. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Skylar?
Our next meeting will be September 21st at 10 o'clock.
Okay, and Parks, Recs, Beautification and Cultural Development, Marty?
We met today at 3 o'clock at City Hall, and in Old Business, it was ascertained that the book sign from the plunge is being stored outside at the Murph, and it has not been refurbished at this time. More research needs to be done as to cost of repair and usability of the sign. Also confirmed that the, the playground equipment that was acquired from the City of Lead is definitely being stored in the old armory. It was not attached documentation that could be found at the time, so that is originally destined for school park, and there's going to have to be some research to, as to the make and model, and to try to access documentation either from the City of Lead or online, and then assess the overall condition before moving forward with that. Barb Walters reported on the upcoming disc golf tournament, and she's very excited about the interest that has been shown. There will be coverage of the event, KOTA will be here to cover it. It's going to be September 9th and 10th night at Butler Park, where there will be a clinic and then an opportunity to play at the course at Anga Store the next day with the professional, I forget her name, who's here, Nacy Brubart as well. So she's very excited about that. Looks like it'll be a good event for Hot Springs. New events, new, um, new business, the maintenance of park was discussed with concerns for watering new trees, the younger trees, especially with the recent high temperatures. So we'll be going through the proper channels to, to, to address that, to make sure that's being done properly so that we don't lose any trees at this point. Our summer rec director from last year, and we're anticipating she'll be our summer rec director next year as well, Kathy Rend attendant, and she has put together a full report about her experience and some of the suggestions that she has, and we're looking forward to hearing that at a later date. There's not time to discuss it at the meeting today. She did express concerns also about, she's been using the tennis courts and I think doing some clinics with kids there, and expressed concerns about some of the weeds encroaching on the edges of the tennis court, which looks like they, they may actually be causing some problems with the resurfacing on the edges, so that's something else we'll look at addressing. That was it. The next meeting will be October 2nd at 3 o'clock, and the public is 8:10.
Okay, thank you, Marty. Planning and Zoning Commission, Harleen?
I'm afraid I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, but their meetings are held the 3rd Wednesday of their week on 7 o'clock in the City Hall.
Okay, thank you. Public Safety, Bob?
Our next public safety committee meeting will be September 20th, City Hall, 8:00.
Okay, thank you. Public Works?
Public Works meeting, August 29th, City Hall, Mayor and myself are present. There were four old business items that still making progress on, the sludge water device, keep recording on that one, we go for five, making progress after a year and a half. So the installation is going, expected to be completed this month. The market at Thompson Street that the council approved about a year ago, that's been completed, so thank you to the city crew for getting that taken care of. The security fencing around the pump station and the water tanks, the 1,000 gallon water tank has been completed. The fencing around the pump station is also now completed, and the 2,000 gallon tank that's expected to be completed yet this fall. And the chip, seal of city streets, the council approved in the last budget. Fifth Street has been chip sealed along Cambridge, Hampton, and Detroit, and Detroit streets between Fifth and Sixth Streets, so that was. The next public works meeting will be next April 7th, 12:00, City Hall.
Okay, thank you. Southern Hills Economic Development, Sam?
The next meeting will be on September 15th, February 1st.
Okay, thank you. And Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, Skylar?
Our next meeting will be September 11th at 5:00 at the clubhouse.
And Volunteer Fire Department, Ron?
The next meeting will be 12th September, 7:00 at the Volunteer Department. I do have some notes from the 8th August meeting, and I was unable to present to the council here. They're good, Dr. Jett training, they had eight people trained on the lab from last month. The rescue truck is near, situation. The five-year planning committees getting together, and I think four and a half, I believe, are part of that.
Good, yes.
Approved the propane contract here.
Okay, and we appreciate, know that it's been a, a long dry hot summer, we appreciate all of our sponsors, so thanks, Ron, if you could relay that to the department. Okay, moving on in our agenda, as we change the agenda, I'd like to consider the old business first, discussion, possible motion to reconsider the award of the Front Nine Irrigation Main Installation Project to Low Bitter Triple Creek LLC for $101,000.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we reconsider this award and, of this contract, and Bob came up with an excellent suggestion on how we had allocated some, or designed to have some funds out of the 2018 budget allocated for this purpose that we would use to fund the contract this year. Bob, can you expound on that for the council's benefit, please?
As I had mentioned at the last council meeting, I'm in favor of the irrigation project going forward. Had it been January 1st, I would have voted for it. There isn't money in the 2017 budget that was budgeted for, so I wasn't comfortable in voting for it. The concession I believe that the mayor is willing to make is to remove his request for $40,000 from the 2018 budget, which would end up being a net balance of zero. We spent it on the 212 funds, I believe is what Misty had talked about this year, and that it wouldn't be taken out of the 2018 budget, so we'll go back in the 2018, 212 budget for a net zero, as long as the mayor is willing to make that concession, and if the rest of the council feels that's a good approach to get this project taken care of, that's what, what I have proposed.
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead, yeah.
Under our engineers' recommendations, this was what we had planned on doing, so for the last two budgets, we did take out and save $40,000 for those purposes, so we were only short by 37, what was it, 37,000 or something. So we do have the funds there. We had saved for this. This was something that was definitely, we knew two years ago, or three years ago, and so I recommend that we take care of it because we're spending money right now repairing all of these, and it's just a short-term fix. So that's, that's my opinion.
This is tomato to model that the funds aren't completely there, they're $37,000.
No, they are not.
So it's saying the funds are there, they have to be supplemented, and that's the reason I made the recommendation on that, is that if we're going to take it out 212 for 2017, it needs to be replaced in 2018, and that can be done by re-moving the request from the 2018 budget.
I'd like to make a comment too, just wanted to thank Jason for the very detailed letter. I was aware you had expressed concerns, the additional work that was involved, but having it him writing and seeing all the detail and everything that went into keeping it up to be in condition right now, it helped a lot, I really appreciate that.
Is there any other comments, questions, or discussions? Jason, do you have anything that you feel that you need to add?
So we need a two-thirds vote to reconsider.
And again, as you heard, Misty, we do need a two-thirds vote to reconsider this, and one of the other reasons that we did bring this back to the council at the last council meeting, we barely had a quorum, only five here, and we certainly did not have an opportunity to consider it. Is there any other comments or questions? If not, Misty, I'd ask that you would call the roll, please.
So the first vote will be whether or not you want to reconsider this, and then if that passes by at least two-thirds, then we'll take another vote on the warning bid. Does everyone understand what you're voting on?
Yes.
Excuse me, I just want to make, make sure that the vote is to award this project?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what I want to make sure.
If we, let's go ahead and complete the reconsideration, and then we will restate the motion to ensure that we understand exactly what, what we're voting on. But good point, Bob, thank you.
So the vote is to reconsider, Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Harleen Kane?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Carol Anne Swartzabob?
Yes.
Skylar Wetzel?
Yes.
Yay, Jason.
Okay, that motion does carry, and that now we would accept a motion to award that Front Nine Irrigation Main Installation Project to the Low Bitter Triple Creek LLC for $101,000, using the appropriation from 2018 to make up the difference that we were short.
I'll make that motion, George.
Okay, is there a, a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? And Bob, if you could go ahead, you were more articulate in explaining that than I am, if you could, again, articulate exactly how the funding would come, and Misty, go ahead and jump in as you need to.
Go ahead. You start out, I'll see if I have any comments after.
Approving this motion, you'll also then need to change the amount appropriated in the ordinance you have in front of you for 2018's budget. We would be decreasing the 212 other expenditures by $40,000. As another motion later in the year, when we have our second supplemental appropriation ordinance, you'll also then need to increase the budget authority provided to the golf course in 2017, and then your offset for that will be the, the fund balance that's in 212. So in 2018, you'll be replenishing that because you'll be collecting the revenue and not expending the $40,000, and in 2017, you're spending it and taking it from the reserves. So as Councilman Nelson mentioned, the net effect will be zero.
Any questions or comments? We understand what we're, we're voting on, voting on to approve the, the contract, award the contract with the funding requirements, as we're stating by Misty.
And I like the word replenish that Misty used, because the money will come out of 212 this year, this is my understanding, for $40,000. And then the mayor will remove from the 2018 appropriation of the $40,000 for that net zero in the 212 fund at the beginning of 2019. Is that correct?
That's right.
That's correct.
You ready to vote?
Okay, let's go ahead, if you would call the roll, please, Misty.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Harleen Kane?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Carol Anne Swartzabob?
Yes.
Skylar Wetzel?
Yes.
Yay, Jason.
Okay, the motion does carry, and then we'll move back up to item A under ordinances, first reading of ordinance 1182, 2018, the appropriation ordinance. And again, this ordinance as written will be amended, okay, with $40,000 on the 212 line item for irrigation at the golf course. I'll accept a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1182, 2018.
I'll accept a motion to approve the appropriation ordinance, 2018.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the first reading of the ordinance. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the first reading of the ordinance. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion?
I want to be a broker record here, just want to make sure that what we're approving is the 2018 appropriation ordinance for $40,000 or the 2-1-2.
So, the new balance should be 658,267 at the second reading.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Again, Misty, would you call the roll on this, please?
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Harleen Kane?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Caroline Swartzenbach?
Yes.
Skylar Westall?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to new business now. Item A, we have a possible motion and discussion to higher brading real estate and auctions provided in city auction services for the surplus city property to include but not limited the South Garden Street lots and the abandoned San Stone Water Reservoir on the corner of Dorland and Happy Hollow. In addition, we, the department heads are looking for additional items of surplus property that we would add to this online auction.
I'll make a motion to higher brading real estate and auctioneers.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that. Is this for online services or are we voting on that at the time or just for your services?
We're just voting to hire them as a auction service for the sale.
And I was prepared that it was online.
And we would. And Caroline, as we discussed in the committee, the recommendation of the committee would be to do that online. So, the way the motion is written, we don't have that wording in there. So, who made them?
I made the motion. I amended to include it online.
Okay.
And then, I'll second that amended motion.
Okay, so we do have a second to the amended motion of doing an online action, auction. For those of you that weren't at the committee meeting, Mr. Bradyne Kane, we would pay a 2% fee to, Misty step in if I'm misstating this?
6% commission, the 2% is what if a broker is involved and that's split. 1% us, 1% Bradyne, so 7% would be the total. If a broker was involved, 6% would come on the successful awarded bid.
Right. And the bid would be online. Bradyne would do approximately $2,000 worth of advertising in the local area. Local newspapers, flyers, and so forth that they do mail out and make the public available. This would be open to anyone, anywhere to bid online as they have done on several occasions in our community. And we would have the opportunity to add surplus city equipment if we needed to. And the reason that we're doing this first is to give us some operating capital and sense to continue on with the surplus of the lots that are buildable for development of workforce housing. Are there any questions or comments concerning this motion? Hearing none, I'd ask all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also are asking for a motion and discussion to approve the Boulder Falls Improvement Project Change Order Number One. It's an increase of $122,685 to add 1,300 linear foot of roadway to Mockingbird Lane. And just before we, I asked for that motion, I just want to explain that was left off the original contract. The city had abandoned doing maintenance on that particular road. And we did not realize there were assessed lots on the north side of that road. There were lots on the north side of that road that were assessed. It was included in part of the agreement with the Boulder Falls Homeowner Association. So, we did have to include that. So, I would accept a motion to approve that change order number one.
I'll make a motion to accept the change order number one to $122,685 for the 1,300 linear foot of roadway, Mockingbird Lane.
I'll start my motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept change order number one. Are there any discussion, questions, or comments?
I'm just disappointed we didn't do this.
It would have. We had the funds and everything, the original estimate.
It came out to be the same.
It just was one of those things that just didn't quite connect. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'd ask all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have a possible motion and discussion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $460,292.78 to additional sales tax fund airport improvement for construction of a partial taxiway revenue received from federal and state airport improvement grant And again, this is basically a transfer of money that we, this grant money that we received to be able to to supplement or pay that bill off. I'd accept a motion for that budget supplement at this time.
I'll make a motion to accept the automatic budget supplement of $460,292.78 to additional sales tax fund airport improvements. 2-1-2, 2-1-2, 045420 for construction of partial taxiway.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve that budget supplement. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, I ask all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have a possible motion and discussion to approve a plat titled Entrance Track West and Entrance Track East of Boulder Falls Edition Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota. The zoning and planning commission did recommend approval of this plat. And what this is, is the entryway signs are currently unplanted, belonging to the developer. And the Boulder Falls homeowners association is wanting to buy those pieces of land so that they can maintain the entryway signage.
I'll make a motion to accept the plat with the title Entrance Track West, Track East of Boulder Falls Edition.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve these plats through the entryway of Boulder Falls. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I did attend that planning and zoning meeting with Georgia. There's signs up there right now. It's not a builder, the site with the signs on there. And a comment was made, they want maybe a private interest that would not have it as a public interest. I wanted to make sure everybody understands that. But it is something that could be done easily. They're paying for the lights to light their signs up right now.
And it also provides a good second entryway to the golf course, advertises that. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving these plats signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Last meeting, we were unable to approve two temporary alcoholic beverage license applications. I'd like to take both E and F at the same time. One for temporary alcohol beverage license for Woolies for their 50's class reunion to be held at the Mueller Civic Center. And the second one, and this one would be on the 16th of September. The second one on the 30th of September for a alcoholic beverage license for Woolies for the Hall of Fame event here at the Mueller Civic Center. I'd accept a motion to accept A, E, and F at this time.
I'll make that motion to accept E and F, evening, the 50's class reunion to be held at the Mueller Civic, Woolies, and then, the Hall of Fame event on 9/30, Woolies Hall.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve these temporary alcoholic beverage licenses. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Two events involving our school and our community. I would, hearing no questions, comments, or discussion, I'd ask all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll abstain.
We have one abstention. The motion does carry. In Item G, we have a possible motion to approve a travel request for our golf course superintendent, Jason. Happy to attend the South Dakota Golf Association Fall Outing in Sioux Falls from September 24th through 26th.
I'll make that option for Jason happy to attend the Fall Outing in Sioux Falls. It's the golf course convention, I believe, on 9/24, 23rd through 26th.
I'll second.
Okay. You should have that application in your packages. Again, we encourage our professionals to attend these professional training events. I think they're very, very important. They can bring home new ideas and improve practices for our courses and organizations. Jason, do you have any comments?
Not unless somebody asks questions.
Okay.
I just hope you don't lose 826 or whatever.
Any comments, other comments, or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, moving on to the finance officer's report. Misty, can you give us your report, please?
Thank you. You do have a memo from the finance office in your council package. Attached to this memo are the usual reports that you see. We have our year-to-date profit and loss summary report. It doesn't give you cash balances, but does show you our revenues compared to expenses in each fund. And if you wanted to see how that tracked against our plan or our budget, the next report, the budget to actual, will break that down based on dollar amount percentage for you. There is less rest of those reports as we get closer towards the end of the year. I did note that our admin finance, and I'd like to note at this meeting, that both the golf course and Evans' funds year-to-date have exceeded, revenues have exceeded expenditures. We know their slower months are coming up, but celebrate those successes and it's been a good summer for both places. Also, in the report, you have the cash balance reports. That also breaks it out by fund for you. And our investment reports, which shows you where the money of the city sits currently. In admin finance, we will be discussing some additional opportunities to expand some of our interest earnings and some of the funds that they're starting to accumulate for our larger projects coming up. So, that is on the horizon, nothing to decide yet, but something being discussed. In your memo, I also mentioned what a big day last Wednesday, August 23rd was, what was the last one? Wednesday before last, for the city. We have a fairly new council, but those of you that have been around for a while know how long we've been working on this Boulder Falls project. They know that the work has started, that now the fund issues have closed. And that is, that's good news. It was a huge day. I don't think it garnered enough attention. There is an explanation on how we're funding this project. Again, more so for those of you that are a little newer. That's been discussed quite a bit with the older council, but I wanted to summarize how that project's being funded and what we can expect for payments. We're looking at making some changes again in the finance office. It seems like we're in a constant state of flux, but it's good. We look to increase efficiency, also save money, and make things just clearer and easier every chance we get. And we use what we call purchase orders to have our department heads fill out and gain your approval. We enter those fills into our accounting system for your review and approval at council meetings. The changes we're recommending to make to these is we have come to the end of using up a five-year supply. Purchase orders are mostly cosmetic. They were designed five years ago when even the numbers for coding were shorter, so the boxes don't even give us enough room. But I also want to change what we call it. I want to assure you that the changes we're recommending do not change the process in any way. But purchase order by definition is requesting your approval prior to money being spent and really what you are approving our claims. So, we're recommending changing the name to claim voucher and then just making some changes to the way the form looks. This will require we make some updates to some verbiage in our procurement policy as we refer to them as purchase orders. And we want to change that to claim voucher. But the process and the steps that we go through to get our claims paid are not going to change. I don't have an example to show you yet. I've worked with department heads, gotten their input on what they'd like the new form to look like. And so, we're working on developing a new form and help have it in place before we run out of these existing books. We had an item on our admin finance agenda meeting that was not discussed since there, the person was not present to discuss it regarding some funds that were accumulated in our 501 fund for slash pad park. You will have that on your next council agenda. I did get an email late this afternoon from the person making the request to get those funds back. And I wanted to bring that to your attention so you can ask any questions, get yourself comfortable with what's being requested prior to the next meeting when you'll see it on your agenda. But also draw your attention to the bigger issue of having that fund and the way it was set up and not really defining or setting any guidelines of how to manage it. So, more discussion on the 501 fund and also a request from a citizen to get money back from that. It's not being used for the purposes intended, but collected through donations to the city. Summer rec program, Marty mentioned that he got a wrap-up from last year's summer rec director. And she had some very good ideas for recommendations, and I realize that that's been tabled. But the summer rec planning starts early in the next year, so I hope that that stays on the agenda and some of her great recommendations are considered because we'll have a lot of discussion that will have to take place prior to making the changes. So, we'd like to have that all in place prior to the beginning of her planning for the 2018 summer rec program. Talked a little bit about the appropriation ordinance in my memo. In the 84th Annual SDM Conference, hadn't heard back from anybody, so last call. I do realize it's very far away in Sioux Falls this year, but if you are interested, I'd be happy to make your reservation. So, this is your last call. If you'd like to attend, it's October 4th and 6th, please let me know so I can get your spot reserved. Those reservations made through. And then, we're still moving through the process of hiring a new city administrator. It's been difficult, but rewarding to try to fill some of the void left by our previous administrator. I thank each of you that have taken the time to recognize and try to lessen the additional workload. It's your understanding and support that helps the most when things get tough. And I wanted to let you know how much it means to me to know that you recognize that. I'd also like to just take a moment to shout out to the excellent team at both City Hall and in our other departments of the city. I'm not the only one that's feeling the stress of the lack of individuals to do that position. And I do believe that everyone has stepped up, has done the best they can publicly through this time. So, shout out to those folks. And if you see them and you recognize an opportunity to thank them, that means a lot. And I would encourage you to do that as I tried to do. So, we keep morale up and make it through this next phase and get somebody hired and started. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Misty. And just to add, part of the mayor's report, a lot of things are going on this summer. We're planning ahead for the construction of our We're planning ahead for the construction of our main, reconstruction of our main street running through town. And one of the things that we had hoped to add to that project was a cantilever sidewalk between the Legion Bridge and the Menacana Bridge that would enhance our downtown area and coincide with improving access to the river, the Warm Water River that runs through our town. We had initially been led to believe that the state of South Dakota DOT would be able to help fund that to a certain extent because it enhances the safety of that river street area by making the building wider and provide adequate, and also provide adequate parking. However, they are unwilling to step up with the funding, and so we will be looking for grants in order to try to capture this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to enhance our downtown and give it, and give it some new, new life and a new reason for people to stop and spend time enjoying Hot Springs. As Misty mentioned, we are getting close to hiring a city administrator. That will be one of the items of discussion during our executive session. I'm going to give you the council a full report of where we are and keep you in the loop. Also, I also want to echo Misty's comments. I'm very pleased with the way the city staff has stepped up. We've had a very, very busy summer. Even with vacations, some key people like Tracy, this last, last couple of days with, last week with the Boulder Falls construction going on, our code enforcement officer, Kim, has stepped in very, very admirably and adequately to make sure that that is keeping on schedule. And one final comment involves with the items that have been discussed tonight with security. Having been a base commander in the Air Force and responsible for the security of many, many valuable assets, security begins with the individual that owns those assets. And we have got to believe, and I think Bob stated it very well, we don't any longer live at Mayberry. There are people out there that are willing to take advantage of the situation and steal where things that don't belong to them. It's very important that the citizens of Hot Springs realize we must lock our cars, keep our porch lights on, lock our houses, and if you see any suspicious activities, let the police department know so that we can hopefully catch the individuals in the act before they flee our community. And I will also reiterate, if they do catch someone that is robbing or committing a crime act in our community, I do not want our police stopping at the city limits and allowing that individual to get away to places like Pine Ridge or Rapid City or Shadrin or any other place. I expect that in accordance with South Dakota law, our police officers to go in full pursuit in a safe and logical manner to catch those individuals so that Hot Springs will not be known as a place of safety for criminals. So again, I would want to reiterate to citizens, and as you talk to people, we are all concerned. We don't like the this rash of crime. I encourage you to keep your vehicles secure, your property secure, garages, houses, homes locked, and report any suspicious activity. Keep your porch lights on, and we will do the very best we can with the limited resources we can, and obviously, we want to listen to those that have suggestions as to how we can do better, and public safety committee is an excellent avenue to get people to discuss those things. So thank you very much. At this time, I would ask for a motion to go into executive session for personnel matters.
I'll make that motion to go into executive session for personnel matters.
I'll second.
It's been moved and favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we'll try to reconvene in about five minutes. And the time is 9:01, and I'd like to reconvene the council. We have two matters to consider before the council and wait till Skylar gets back. Okay, we would, first of all, accept, first of all, we'd accept a motion to accept personnel actions, and those, you can find my agenda here. We'd approve personnel actions A through C and E through K. I'd accept that motion at this time.
I'll make the motion to approve personnel A through C and E through K.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept these personnel actions. Any questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, all those in, go ahead.
The question that's been put to me by the public, whether it's appropriate for a family member of the city mayor to be employed by the city. Does the attorney have any opinion on that?
For the record, there's no statutory language that prevents any city employee from also being a family member of the mayor or council, as long as there's no improprieties.
Thank you.
And I will state, for the record, I was not involved in any way, had no foreknowledge of the fact that a family member was going to put an application in. I do work at the plunge and certainly did not contact Chris Hansen on her behalf. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the personnel actions as moved, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second action that we discussed during the executive session was the possibility of bringing an individual candidate to interview for the city administrator position. I would ask for a motion to provide financing for that trip to Hot Springs, not to exceed $500.
I'll make the motion to fund the travel and. I'll make the motion to fund not to exceed $500 for our, to do the ability for our city administrator.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We do have a motion then and a second to not to exceed $500 to pay expenses to bring a candidate to interview for the city administrator job here at Hot Springs. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would ask now, if there is no other business, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Is there a second? All those in, I hear a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Time is seven o'clock. The call to committee board, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is to the land, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Misty, will you please call and vote?
Georgia Holmes.
Present.
Bob Nelson.
Here.
Arne Meyer.
Here.
Harlene King.
Here.
Sam Powers.
Ron Richards.
Present.
Carol Ann Schwarzenbach.
Here.
Skylar Wessel.
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum. First item is to adopt the agenda, and I again remind you, if you do have an item of interest on the agenda that would be a conflict of interest, please notify the council as you vote. I accept a motion to approve the agenda at this time.
Motion to approve the agenda.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have before you in your package a copy of the minutes of the previous 5th of September council meeting. I'd accept a motion at this time to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the September 5th council meeting.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the September 5th council meeting. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item A under claims bills in between, accept a motion to accept the bills in between.
Motion to approve the bills in between.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bills in between. Are there any questions, comments concerning the, for those bills? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item B, we do have a change to the current claims, and I'll ask Misty if you could summarize those for the council members, please.
The total from the payment packet that you have has decreased to $229,167.05. There are two claims that decreased in this batch. The first on page one, the very first item, to ShopCo, we had a $17.99 credit that was applied, so that changed to $31.46. And then on page seven, the second item, Twilight, First Aid, and Safety, decreased by $19.94 due to a couple returned items, and so that total decreased to $52.19. And those are the only changes to the current claims.
Okay, hearing that, I accept a motion to accept the current claims as changed items on page one and page seven.
I'll make that motion to accept the current claims with the changes from page one and page seven.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the current claims as corrected. Any questions, comments, or discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Current claims are approved. Are there any communications from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to personnel. Accept a motion to approve the personnel actions A through E.
Make a motion to approve personnel actions A through E.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those personnel actions. Are there any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion does carry, those personnel actions are approved. Moving on to committee reports, administrative and finance, Carol Ann.
We'll meet on October the 2nd at 1:00 PM at City Hall.
And care board advisory, Georgia.
There was no meeting, but the next meeting will be at 8:00 on the 29th of the airport.
Okay, great. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Israel Crum.
We met on September 14th, 7:00 PM here at Mueller Center. The main items of discussion for the new requirements for acceptance of medical waste at the facility and the proof contact for cocaine usage.
Okay, okay, great, thank you very much, Ron. Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Carol Ann.
We'll meet on October the 4th at the reunion.
Okay. Evidence point advisory committee, Skylar.
Our next meeting will be September 23rd, 10:00 AM.
Parks Recreation, Beautification, and Cultural Development, Marty.
Our next meeting will be October 2nd at 3:00 PM.
Planning and zoning commission, Harlene.
Planning and zoning meets the third Wednesday of every month at 7:00 PM in City Hall.
Okay, thank you. Public safety, Bob.
The next public safety committee meeting will be this Wednesday at City Hall, but I would like to follow up to a question that was put to the council for the last council meeting regarding the police activity break-ins that have been happening. It was suggested to us that we might be able to help that problem out by utilizing the reserves to a greater capacity. We only have two reserves, it's going to be a little tough to use them to a greater capacity. But it was also suggested that I talk with the gentleman in charge of the Custer County Sheriff's Department Reserve Program. They currently have seven active reserves up there, but had as many as 25 at one point. I spoke with the gentleman last, last week, and I was very excited about meeting on possibilities that getting a reserve program up and going again, a much larger one in Hot Springs, the benefits that can be derived from that. There's lots of guidelines that govern how reserves are managed. The reserves are still always under the control of the police chief. They're not out and about doing their own thing. They do have their own units that manages, you know, their training, keeping track of the times that they're actually out controlling those kinds of things. There's three steps that are available within the reserve program. Step one is when the officers are going through their classes and before they receive their book of office. Step two is when they're actually on the job training with a certified officer. And step three is when they've done enough patrol, when they've done 300, 320 hours, and they can actually patrol after, they don't have to be with a certified officer. In Custer, they utilize the reserves to a very large degree. They're available at all the athletic events for the school. They actually meet with the kids when they get off the buses. They provide court security, and there's just a lot of things that a reserve program could be used to enhance our existing police department and get out there and interface with the public. Had a conversation with the mayor. He agrees that it's a topic that's important enough to begin having a very serious conversation, so we'll begin doing that on Wednesday at the next public safety meeting and figure out how we can possibly grow that program and be able to supplement our regular police department. That's something we'll be doing.
Okay, thank you, Bob. And also in conjunction with that, I have talked with Chief Close about the possibility of also looking at various neighborhood watch functions within the neighborhoods of Hot Springs. And Chief Close is looking at the possibility of. the neighborhoods of Hot Springs, and Chief Close is looking at the possibility of working with that type of organization to help provide some extra eyes and ears in our community. Next is public works, Bob.
Public works met on the 12th, City Hall. Had a number of active business items. The sludge water and device installation, that's ongoing. The expected startup will be the first part of October. On-site training will be provided by the manufacturer and is expected to last for a couple of days. For a couple of months now, we've been talking about a sewer backup into private residents here at Hot Springs. The resident on Houston Avenue has had two sewer backups in their basement over the last three years, most recent backup occurring in June of this year. These sewer backups have resulted in significant cost to the homeowners and a concern about their ability to continue insuring their home if another backup should occur. It's believed a combination of two events resulted in sewer backups, discharge of prohibited waste in the city sewer and an undersized sewer system serving the residents. The city sewer department has inspected the sewer line with a video camera to ensure there isn't any deterioration in the sewer line and provided the homeowners with a copy of that inspection. The sewer department has also increased their visual inspection of the manholes along the sewer line to ensure no building with prohibited waste is occurring. Options for eliminating prohibited waste have also been considered, and Tracy is beginning to design specifications to replace the undersized sewer lines and expect to have some preliminary plans completed in the fall. Chipping of the brush pile to landfill, that's the biochar that has come back up. Mayor Cotty provided a letter of support from the city to the contractor that wants to set up a biochar processing plant in Hot Springs to assist the contractor, with their request for grant funding from the state of South Dakota. Contractors indicated they're working towards the start of date of late October, and a memorandum with letters standing will need to be in place prior to the contractor beginning their work. Boulder Falls, Boulder Falls construction project is approximately two weeks behind. Mayor Cotty informed an order of quick construction in writing about the city's concern with the project being behind schedule. Quick Construction has assured the mayor that by adding an additional crew, they will still be able to complete the project on time. Substantial completion is expected for the end of October with final completion at the end of November. Public parking along river streets, we've been talking about that a little bit. The expansion of that public parking along a portion of River Street is south of University Avenue is expected to begin within a month. The city crew will fill in some of the low spots with gravel and add marking, add marking for daily parking. The surplus of available city lots, environmental testing of the soil and testing for asbestos that the old water filtration will be, will be paid for by the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources, scheduled to be in turn. That's it. Next meeting will be September 26th, 2:00 at City Hall.
Okay, thank you, Bob. And just a couple of things, I just wanted to make mention that Chatto was the one that did the work, did the legwork for getting that grant from the E N R for the environmental cleanup, and also due to the amendment, the end date is mid-October, I suppose, or it's two weeks later in October as opposed to the, what you mentioned.
Is that for the sludge, the water?
No, that's for the Boulder Falls, sorry.
And the, yes, and that we can have in November.
It's a substantial completion. It was at the end of October. That has moved two weeks to mid-November and substantial completion at the end, or the complete contract at the end, the end of November. Southern Hills Economic Development, Sam.
Well, first of all, it's off to be late. I was actually able to make it to this past meeting, but the next meeting will be the third Friday of October, but we're meeting in August.
Okay, thank you. Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, Skylar.
We had a meeting on September 9th, and we briefly looked at the 2018 rates, and we also looked at the possibility of getting a skin for the billboard on the bypass that advertises the golf course. We also are very happy that the irrigation project was approved, and that will be starting this fall or winter. Also, Jason will start airwaying green September 19th and 20th. Our next meeting will be October 9th.
Okay, thank you, Skylar. Go to your fire department, Ron.
We met last Monday. Pretty much business is usual for them. We start them, they put them out, someone starts them. They want to let us know there's going to be a fire prevention week, October 9th. And it's kind of the tenet schedule right now. They'll be visiting the schools on the 9th and then the program. It'll be an open house on Thursday. There'll be an open house that week, Thursday that week, and we invite anybody to come down, and they'll have some talking, football games, stuff to have kids down, and stuff. Look very good, we're talking quite a lot.
Okay, thank you, Ron. And moving on in the agenda, we do have the second reading of ordinance 1182, 2018, the appropriation ordinance. I would accept a motion to accept that ordinance at this time.
I'll make the motion to accept ordinance, the second reading, ordinance 1182, 2018, appropriation ordinance.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the ordinance of 1182, 2018. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
That ordinance has been adjusted downwards by the 40,000 we talked about at the last meeting.
Yes, sir.
That's correct, yeah. Thanks for reminding the council of that, Bob. That was part of the getting the golf course irrigation project approved. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, I would ask for a roll call vote, please. Misty?
Georgia Holmes.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
Yes.
Martin Meyer.
Yes.
Harleen Kane.
Yes.
Sam Powers.
Yes.
Ron Richards.
Yes.
Carol Ann Schwarzenbach.
Yes.
Skylar Russell.
Yes.
Okay, motion does approve. That ordinance is approved. Moving on to resolution, item A, resolution 2014 dash.
2017, no, 2017, sorry.
17 dash 16, a resolution to surplus unusable property. You should have a list of that property in your packages. I would accept a motion to pass that resolution to surplus the unusable city property.
I'll make a resolution to pass the city surplus, surplus city unusable property resolution, 2017 dash 16.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we pass the resolution to surplus the unusable city property. Are there any questions, comments, or discussions? Hearing none, ask all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion does carry, and that property will be auctioned off at a later date. Moving on to new business, item A, we have a possible discussion and possible motion to accept 30,000 gallon propane pre-buy from Dakota Propane. The quote that came in was a dollar and two cents per gallon, significantly lower than the other quotes we've received. I would accept a motion at this time to accept that pre-buy quote.
I'll make a motion to accept the pre-buy quote from Dakota Propane to the dollar to a gallon.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the quote from Dakota Propane. Any questions, comments, or discussion?
That's a really good price, I'd say.
Okay, hearing none, other comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We also have before us a request from Kim Moore to release funds, the amount of $3,181.36. This was a Splash Park restricted cash balance, a viable one fund, that Kim raised in good faith through various events to build a Splash Park here in Hot Springs, and those funds were deposited with us, I guess, in October of 2013. She has requested to have those funds back to enable her to invest those in other charitable events within the community. The auditor has looked at this, Misty has done her due diligence and researched this. The auditor said that it's okay to give those funds back to the donor in the same amount, or if the donor would want, and the city would agree, to document that those funds could be used for another purpose within the city. Once we give those funds back, remind you as a council, we no longer have any authority to direct how they're being used in the community. So I guess we have a couple of options as far as a motion goes. Number one, we can move to give those funds back, or number two, we can continue to hold those funds as they are. Obviously, the recommendation from Misty is to honor Kim's request and give those, those funds back and get them off of our, our, our council. I would, at this time, Misty, is there anything else that you want to add to that?
Yeah, I would just add that we have a total of six receipts that make up that balance. Two of those receipts specifically mention Kim's name associated with the Dakota Mud Run, a color run in 2013, and a ball festival in 2013. And then the other four receipts do not reference her name necessarily, but do reference the Splash Park. In June of 2014, there received of the color run for a Splash Park, there were some funds. In November 2014, received from donations from a ball festival, there were funds received noting the Splash Pad Park. And then in December of two, I'm sorry, November of 2014, the Lions Club donated $50, and some group called Finally Healthy donated $20. So as we consider this request in light of the direction from the auditor, I do think it's important to note what funds come associated with her name and what funds come associated with the mother.
I asked that our attorney be consulted about this, and I believe we did talk to him.
Yes, he's here.
Sure, absolutely. Charlotte, you could relay the information that you relayed to us concerning this, appreciate it.
I called the municipal lead first to see if there was a quick answer, so I wouldn't have to bill you for a lot of time researching that. And the quick answer is, as long as you return the funds to those who donated them, there's no issue. The one thing that we, as attorneys, that we recommend is that when you return the funds, you give a stipulation that they should be used for charitable purposes, but we are not going to follow up with what they do with them. We're not taking that responsibility. And that basically would wash our hands clean.
Okay, does that answer your question, Charlotte?
So even if her name is not on the contribution, you can still give it back to her?
Well, I think she mentioned the Lions Club.
Lions.
Yeah. My advice would be direct that fund, those funds to the Lions.
Back to those groups, Dr. Kim.
What about getting their express permission to?
That would probably be fine, as far as it was in writing, yeah.
I don't know who Finally Healthy is. Does anyone?
Is her group, you said it was a 501(c)(8), is that what you said?
No, I did not say that. It's in the city's 501.
Oh, in, oh, okay.
Okay.
We do, is it possible to have some kind of a clarification from her that she's going to notify in case somebody associated with these donations comes to us later?
I think part of the advice from our attorney is to just release it with this stipulation that it continue to be used for charitable purposes, and then put that responsibility back on her and not own that follow-up or any clarification. And I did forward the letter I received from Kim since she was not able to be here tonight explaining what her intention is. She would love to see the funds used towards our youth in this community to enhance physical activity. In what fashion or another.
Well, shouldn't the motion specify what part of the money goes to what thing? Because you're saying it goes to, not all goes back to Kim, part of it goes to the one, or whatever.
Yeah, I would say that there are only two receipts specifically that maybe could not be included in the original motion, and the total dollar amount for those is 70. So if you would like to include in your motion that we will contact those dones, donors, donors.
Donors.
Donors. We're happy to do that. So the dollar amount would decrease by $70 until we got clarification from those donors.
Okay, and it's, to accept a motion, the council would again recommend that we follow the advice that we give those funds back to Kim as requested, with the exception of checking with the approximately $70 that have been identified from other donors. I would accept a motion at this time to accomplish that.
More, more discussion?
I'm concerned about us even doing this anymore if we're not going to have a little bit more, a finer line as to how these things are going to be used in this district in the future.
I do as well with most of the items that we discussed with admin finance and local officials.
We need to work on that.
Yeah, good, good point. Is there a motion to, to return those funds? Do we want to table it? Do we want to keep them? What's your privilege, counsel?
I'll make a motion to refund the funds as presented by the mayor. I've got to remember all the names here.
It's the, the $31.81.36 minus the $70 that we can identify that came from other donors. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we refund those funds to Kim, with the exception of the $70 that we've identified. Are there any further discussion?
With the letter that it continued to be used for charitable purposes.
That would be part of, part of the process of returning them, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of returning the funds to Kim with the exception of the $70 that we can identify, again notifying her that these funds, or a recommendation of these funds to be used for charitable purposes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
No.
Okay, it, could you have a roll call, please, Misty?
Sure. Georgia Holmes?
No.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Martin Meyer?
Yes.
Harleen Kane?
Yes.
Sam Powers?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Carol Ann Schwarzenbach?
No.
Skylar Russell?
Yes.
Motion does carry. We also have before you item D, possible motion and discussion, discussion to surplus city lots, that second. Oh, I'm sorry, jumped you ahead. Thank you for, I just tested everyone, thank you. Item C, the possible motion and discussion to accept the highway safety grant for fiscal year two thousand eighteen for the purchase of three stalker radars at six thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy cents. This is speed enforcement grant will be reimbursed at the two and five thousand seventy dollars and ninety-six cents. Their motion to accept that highway safety grant for the purchase of these radars.
I'll make a motion to accept the grant, the purchase of the three stalker radars at six thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy cents, to be reimbursed at five thousand seventy ninety-six.
I'll second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept that grant. Is there any discussion, questions, or comments?
The difference in that, does that come from the base budget or from?
Yes.
Yes, yes, it would come out of their budget. Okay, hearing no further discussion, ask all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Now we move on to item D, possible motion and discussion to surplus city lots at second Minicotta addition to Hot Springs. These are lots one, two, four, block thirty-one, and that, physical description of that is the abandoned water reservoir at the corner of Hampton and Happy Hall.
I'll make a motion to surplus those lots on second Minicotta on Hampton and Happy Hall waters reservoir.
Okay, or second? I'll second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we surplus these lots. And again, and just a reminder, we're planning to have those lots auctioned off, or that, it locked it off at the same time that we do the surplus city properly. Any other discussion, questions?
Is there been a date determined yet?
We don't have a date yet. It'll be an online auction, and so there'll be a time limit, a month or so, or weeks, I can't remember.
Thirty days to advertise, at least. And so I think that we were shooting for around the Thanksgiving time is what we hoped for, although the auctioning firm we hired is very busy with the state auctions, so they haven't been able to set a date yet.
We want to try to get the dolphin before Christmas. If anyone wants a Christmas present or something. Okay, any other questions or discussions concerning these, these lots on?
Are there any kind of sanctioned place that somebody buys will deal with this prime and they're still going to end up set in moments of nine, except for?
Okay, this particular one, we haven't put any stipulation because number one, existing water tower, water storage tank is there. And secondly, one of the lots does have the easement for swirling that goes across there. And there would only be the possibility of some sort of word to, to build, would be just probably limited one, one home, rather than several that we had planned for the old water field station lots.
I just wondered, did the actual tower itself, the actual container?
It's in the ground.
There's been some interest from some parties to possibly use that as a training device for school and drivers, and so there is some discussion that, some interest in, in that regard.
At one time it was, was it leaking or not, is that what we started to say?
That I don't know.
It was replaced by a two million gallon tank and they stopped using it.
I thought it was because it was leaking, so I don't know, I guess before we'd say
I don't know whether it was leaking.
Offered the water.
I just know they built a new thing, and they followed it and came out on the street.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing done, all those in favor of approving these lots as surplus signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have item E, motion and discussion to approve travel request for the library director, Dawn Johnson, and her assistant, Amy Cappy, to attend that state library conference in Chamberlain later this month. You have that request in your packages, I'd accept a motion to accept that travel request.
I'll make a motion to accept the travel request from Dawn Johnson and from her and Amy Cappy to attend the library conference in Chamberlain on nine twenty-seven through nine twenty-nine.
Okay, yeah, we have a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept that travel request. Any comments, questions, or discussion?
It's really a good training form, they pick up a lot of information there, so I'm glad.
Okay, great. Any other comments? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And my item of new business is possible motion and discussion to approve a travel request for chief close to attend the law enforcement coordinating committee conference in Sioux Falls in November. Again, you have that request, that request in your packages, I'd accept a motion to approve that at this time.
I'd make a motion to approve travel request from police chief Mike Close to attend twenty seventeen law enforcement coordinating committee conference in Sioux Falls.
Second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that Mike Close attends that conference. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to the finance officer's report.
There are no financials, being the second meeting of the month in your package, I have very little to report other than what you see on the agenda and what we've all been working on in our committees. Still looking for someone to fill the city administrator position so that some focused attention can be made on things like Georgia mentioned, and some other items that are pending that we need to spend some time on. But time has been a difficult thing to manage with the absence, and it's not just for me, it's for everyone. So we're looking forward to getting that position filled so that we can continue focusing on items that will move the city forward and help clarify some of our policies and procedures.
Okay, thank you. And as far as the mayor's report, again, as Bob mentioned in his report, we did have some concern with Boulder Falls construction falling behind schedule. We did send a letter expressing those concerns, and Quinn Construction was quick to respond. They have listed numerous milestones that they have met and intend to meet, which would allow them to complete the contract on time. They have added crews and equipments since that letter has been sent, and I think our confidence is growing that they can meet that schedule. Just also want to bring to attention to the council, to the public, we're beginning the early phases of designing the US eighteen three eighty-five reconstruction process, project through our town, and we have seen this as a one-time opportunity to add a cantilever sidewalk as a part of our river beautification program between the Jennings Bridge and the Minicotta Bridge on River Street. We feel that's an important step to revitalize our downtown area, to draw people to the river, along with cleaning up the cattails in the river and providing pedestrian access to the river. Tracy has an idea of putting some kind of a holding arrangement that would hold grass and make that usable for people to use, and again, that would help control that invasive species of cattails that we have. That would improve the river, giving access to it. We also want to see about including some water features. So one of the first steps of that is getting that cantilever sidewalk into the design. Not only is it an enhancement to bringing people to our downtown area, but it's also a safety issue. The state department of DOT, we asked several years ago, I know even while I was at the chamber, commerce, serving as the executive director, if we could get some kind of an alternate bypass to keep large trucks from going through our downtown area. And they could not find an economical alternative to do that. So we're stuck with heavy truck vehicles, mostly coming from Black Hills materials, but other places also that could carry anything from hazardous material to oversized loads. And what this cantilever sidewalk would do, give us approximately six feet of additional traffic lane space to enhance pedestrian safety. So we're very, very keen on getting that in the process of sending the letter out later this week to the department of DOT, informing them of that. They are balking at funding that. And I think because of the circumstances and situations, that we should be able to get them to, to fund that, and so I've asked that they reconsider that. I've also got letters prepared to get support from the department of tourism, because I think it makes our downtown area much like the main street square in Rapid City, a drawing point where visitors and residents align. And I also think it would enhance our ability to fill those downtown businesses that are unoccupied at this time with people and those businesses that are there to prosper more highly. So I've also included a letter to the governor's office of economic development to ask for their support. So those letters will be going out, and I just wanted to let the council and the public know that that's the direction that we're heading, and hopefully we can get the support to get that done. If we can't, I guess we'll have to have a lot of fundraisers to make it happen, but I think it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and I think it's worth giving it our best effort to make sure that happens, because it would, I think, really add substantially to our downtown area, the beautiful sandstones that we have, and we would be able to, really be able to draw people and get them to stay in our downtown area. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of that.
Is there any sense to what you just said?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to thank you for, you know, being adamant for this. There was a study done a few years ago, I think it was twenty twenty, people united to come down here, and I won't be lengthy, but the main thing that people were interested in was the river and doing things there, so I think we'll have great, important support.
Thank you, Caroline.
I just, I just want to know what's cantilevered.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I understand the principle, you know.
What we'll, what we have to do, and what we're trying to do is get beams that are constructed with the reconstruction, probably pre-stressed concrete that will overhang that river flood wall by approximately six feet. And that, on top of that, would be a sidewalk with a railing. So you've got, people are able to look down into the, into the river and complete a walking circle around Centennial Park and the Jennings and Minicotta Bridge. Yeah. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question if there, so you already have like access going across where there's the bridge that goes to Centennial Park, so that would be maintained, would there be any other access points to?
Well, what we would do, Marty, I think the plan would be on the Centennial Park side, allow pedestrian access, have paths that go down into that, into that river bottom so that people could get access to the warm water, unlike Rapid Creek, you know, where you can't stick your foot in for only a couple seconds, people can wade in that, and it just would provide an opportunity for people to experience that part of the concrete. Anything else? If not, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting's adjourned, thank you.